United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue did you do the roll call please?
Councilmember DeBoer.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Teelander.
Here.
Mayor Althoff.
Here.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with new item 7D for the New Union Brewery. The rest of it as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Approval of the minutes for the preceding regular and special meeting of February 1st and February 16th, February 1st, first?
It isn't the 16th.
I'm sorry, there was too much in the segment.
It's just the first.
Just one.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that we approve the minutes as presented to us for the February 1st, 2016 meeting.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Approval of the council payable?
I'll make a motion to approve the council payable as presented.
A second?
I'll second.
No discussion? I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote please.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Citizens' discussion for items not on the agenda?
My name is Chris Becker. I'm running for Kent County Prosecutor. I don't know if anybody saw, but Bill Forsyth elected prosecutor since I was a junior in high school and has finally decided to retire. I've been his chief assistant for the last five years and I've decided to throw my hat in the ring, so I'm trying to get out and introduce myself to everybody. We have pamphlets to give you a little bit more information. But just want to say I came up with a campaign theme of Tested, Trusted, and Tough on Crime. Because that kind of summarizes everything that tells you about my career. Tested, I've been prosecutor for 20 years. I mean, the chief when the chief wasn't the chief, so. We all started out kind of doing the same thing, really had a bunch of drunk driving cases together, I came up through the ranks just like he did. So I've seen a lot, I've handled everything from, you know, I was running at large to my last trial with Shawn Jarrett, who was the serial rapist and murderer of the city of Walker and the city of Granville that I handled. So I've seen a lot, done a lot, and I think through that time I've built a lot of relationships. And that comes with the trusted part. I've got the endorsement right now of already the command staff of the Kent County Sheriff's Department, command staff of the Granvilles Police Department, Kentwood Police Department there, Patrol Union, I'm working on, let's see what happens with Lowell, I'm working on that too, so. But I think I've built a lot of relationships. I have Kent County Domestic Violence Response Team, Trafficking Task Force are part of those, because part of the job of prosecutors is to make sure crime doesn't happen. Part of the problem is, you know, we kind of come in after the barn's gone out of the horse, gone out of the barn, and trying to stop crime before it starts is an important part of the prosecutor's job. And then Tough on Crime, Shawn Jarrett's just one of my cases I've handled. I handled the double murder in the city of Kentwood. Jeffrey Malmberg was the guy who killed the two-year-old child, threw him in a dumpster and the child ended up in an incendiary fire. So I know what it takes to take a case from, you know, the investigator stage all the way through trial and keep the community safe. I have kids here. I want to keep Kent County, the way I grew up in Kent County, a safe, healthy place to live. So that's what I'm trying to do, trying to get out and introduce myself, because I think fortunately Lowell's a very safe place to live. You have your share of crime and share of, you know, drunk driving, B and E, stuff like that, but nothing major, and we're just trying to keep it that way. And I think the partnerships that are formed, the experience I have, I think we can do that. So I'm trying to introduce myself. I'm going to stick around if I can, but I do have to pick up my son from basketball class. Depends on how long your meeting goes, but I'll be happy to take any questions right now if you have the time. That's all I wanted to say, introduce myself. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Dickerman. I live at 429 High Street. And I wanted to take a moment to thank Lowell Light Power and Steve Donkersloot for their last council meeting. Mr. Donkersloot's presentation describing the power cost adjustment or PCA portion of our monthly electric bill was very well prepared and very enlightening. I have three meetings myself and three bills, and I have better understanding of their computed. So I'd encourage all ratepayers to watch presentation on YouTube from the February 1st meeting to gain a better understanding of PCA. I believe that Mr. Donkersloot's presentation will go a long way to dispel the rantings of a disgruntled group of ratepayers on the internet. Now, if you skip ahead to the 1 hour and 21 minute mark, you'll see that Councilman Teelander agrees with me. He said, and I quote, "The PCA has been much maligned, and I've misunderstood a lot of them." I find the hubris in this statement to be incredible. Perhaps it's the very definition of hypocrisy that Mr. Teelander himself was the one doing the maligning. You see, on September 30th, 2015, Teelander exclaimed on his blog, "Should I be angry about the PCA portion of my bill going up 500 percent over the past four years?" End quote. He didn't ask Mr. Donkersloot for a presentation or an explanation then, and he didn't offer an explanation to the reading public. Was it perhaps because he was looking to be elected at this very council the next month? Yes, Mr. Teelander needed us to be angry. He needed to instill enough confusion, fear, frustration, and doubt that we would vote for him. And we did. After the election, Mr. Teelander hid the site behind a members-only login, but I must say that he showed courage this past week by opening it up for the public examination again, and I've read some of those pages. So on December 17th, 2014, he wrote, and I quote, "Why do you stand by and let these inept people run our finances into the ground? Your power bill is going up, your property taxes are going to go up." End quote. The title for Mr. Teelander's blog that day was, "Who's Running the Asylum?" Well, I can answer that question now. Today, it's you, sir. On your blog site, you often use incendiary language and sensational titles with every post, titles such as "The Dead Council," "Triad of Insanity," "After the Lowell-Michigan Elections, Who's Getting Fired?" You know, even our city attorney Dick Went made that list. Perhaps my favorite was, "Allen, Why Are You So Angry?" Mr. Teelander often lectured the City Council on their professional and ethical behavior. On March 12th, 2014, Mr. Teelander posted a copy of the ICMA Code of Ethics from the International City and County Management Association. Ten and three of that document states, quote, "Be dedicated to the highest ideals of honor and integrity in all public and personal relationships, in order that the member may merit the respect of and confidence of other elected officials and employees and of the So my question is, were you upholding these ideals? When you painted the, you called Mr. Hall a pirate and painted a eye patch on his face? How about when you referred to Mr. Howe and Mr. Pierce and fellow council member Mr. Hedges as the Three Stooges? Now, you did that on more than one occasion. Is this what passes for honor and respect on this City Council? And if so, what does it say about us as a community? Do you really believe you are showing these men the respect they deserve then? And if not, how can we possibly respect you now? Don't you believe the people of Lowell, the city of Lowell, deserve a more honorable council member sitting in that seat? So, you know, you started your blog with a very simple quote, "The pen is mightier than the sword." I'm asking you tonight, use your pen, resign from this council, restore some respect and honor to the city of Lowell and help heal its community.
Prairie Beach, I reside at 924 Riverside Drive. I've talked to Dave Pasquale. I think that, and I first want to say that I think the council has made one of the wisest choices they've recently made in hiring David as the interim city manager. With that said, I've, I sit on LARA, which is Lowell Area Recreation Authority. I sit on the City Parks as a commissioner. Last week, and I talked to Dave about this, so I just want to let you know that next, that your next meeting, which will be March 7th, the LARA, which is basically the trails that are working on the trails throughout the city and the community of Virgin's and Lowell Township, will be doing a 25 to 30-minute presentation for you. Because we have not had, the last time that we've had city representative, I represent the city on that, but from the council was Mr. Hall. His last meeting, we believe, that we looked up, was in September and then became ill and passed away. I recall in November when I invited the council to attend, because the trails are going to go forward in the community, and I believe that they are a precious thing that can happen throughout Lowell Township, Virgin's Township, and the city of Lowell to bind us together. We need the support of the city council. Back in November, when you were elected, I invited you to a meeting. We have not had anybody from the city council at one of our meetings. We just met last week. And with the project that Lowell Township's trying to do with their park and different things, we need the support, or we need the council involved in that. And I beg you to attend, but again, we're going to, seeing that you're not coming to us to participate, we're going to make sure we come to you. And on March 7th, we'll be here for, and it'll be a lengthy presentation to get everybody up to speed. Thank you.
Jim Salzmann, 505 North Jefferson. I'm going to address, hopefully, what is referenced in the 2016 city budget. And I know prior to Mark Howe being terminated, he had put a five-year street improvement plan, and I believe that was passed by the city council sometime September of 2015. While his plan falls far short of what we need to repair these streets in Lowell, this type of plan should have probably been started over 20 years ago, when we really needed to start thinking about the roads and where they were going to be in 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years. And so we probably wouldn't be in the position we are at today. I drove my car around just on the east side of the river, and which covers approximately 6.5 to 7.5 miles of road, and most of them are in, need a full replacement or some serious upgrades. And with that in mind, with our current budget of road repairs, what, $400,000? I don't know exactly what that is. It's going to take us 10 to 12 years just to take care of the streets on this side of the river. I haven't had a whole lot of opportunity to drive on the west side of the river, but I would imagine those streets are kind of, kind of in the same place, and if they're not, within the 10 to 12 years, they're going to be even, they're going to be like this side of town is today. So my question is, as we move forward, are we still planning to use those fundings that Mark had put aside for 2016 in the budget? And moving forward, what is a long-term affordable plan for 20 years, not to remortgage our house, businesses, or future, but to ensure the safety of our streets and citizens? So I'm looking for some input by our next meeting on the questions I ask tonight. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Shawn Baum. Number one, I am new to the community, but not new to Michigan. I am not new to dealing with politics in a community. I would like to thank all of you for the service you've done.
Where do you live, sir?
Pardon me?
Where do you live?
806 North Washington.
Thank you.
I also own 126 Southwest Street and have an office at 2531 West Main.
Thank you.
You've appointed Dave Pasquale, who I do not know, as an interim city manager. If you haven't looked at his contract, don't know what it is. In 1980, when I used to drive through Lowell on my way to school and campus at Michigan State, Lowell didn't have a city manager. They had a population of 172 people less than the halfway now. You've got a population of 3,890 people. What you paid Mark Howe was $31.16 per man, woman, and child. You could throw a cat and dog in here if you want. Everybody in this town complains about the roads. You've got a budget of $400,000. You can increase that by 25% by going to a half million dollars, not hiring another city manager, taking Dave Pasquale, working out an agreement as a part-time city manager, or having your mayor serve in the purpose of signing bills and running the day-to-day Number two, I don't love scared. I am not confused. I'm not afraid, and I'm not angry. This council has done a good service by trying to clean up a mess that was created for the citizens of Lowell. You had been told you were elected by a minority of the people of the city. That is a fallacy. You were elected by a majority of the people that concern, have a major concern for the city, and remember that. Thank you.
In terms of the city manager, in 1980, we did have a city manager, and his name was Ray Goeda, that served from 1976 to 1987.
Thank you, Dave.
And we've also had a city manager since 1960.
Jim Salzmann, 505 North Jefferson. Tonight, I know at the end of your agenda, you guys are looking for a closed session. Open Medium Act, MC 15.2688, is pertaining to state and federal issues, and I'm just wondering, when did the issue you guys want to talk tonight in closed session become
Okay, on the old business.
Dave, I'd like you to be helping on this.
As far as strategic goals report, we have a table, and I don't think that there's anything further at this point that can be discussed. Also, the pending council projects report is included within your packet, it's there. And city council training and information schedule is also within your packet, and you can consider any discussion if you wish. Next is the equipment purchase, and this has been discussed for some time, and I've asked our interim public works director, Ron Woods, to provide a memo on this. And Ron, if you could just give an update and a recommendation on it.
Certainly. Mayor and council, I prepared a memorandum to the interim city manager, Dave Pasquale, recommending that we place the door on the existing skid steer. We purchased that door back in December, and we've just been waiting, pending council action. You had talked previously about potentially purchasing a new skid steer. We need that piece of equipment for winter operation. The door is there. At this point, I'm recommending that we place that door on that, on that piece of equipment so that we can utilize it to its fullest end.
Can you refresh my memory, the cost of that door is?
The cost of the door itself was $2,431, and there was additional cost of $800 of hardware that needed to go with that door, so the total cost is $2,731. Thank you.
Ron, you have everything to install it on?
Yes, we do.
When we first brought this up, that door was back ordered, and we didn't think that we were going to be able to get it. Now that it's here, winter is mostly over. At this time, I think we should just go ahead and move on with it and let it be replaced when the budget is caused for it.
That's scheduled for 2018, 19 fiscal?
But the point right now is to get that door installed, that's the question at hand. And do we need a motion or anything to allow, Ron? You just say yes and go?
Yeah, basically, just yes and no. We just sort of told them to hold off because we didn't, we didn't know whether we wanted to replace it, put the money into it, and now it's basically, the door is here, and we'll let them go through with their budget. So are you going ahead with it or? Yeah.
I have one more question, that is, that this door was originally planned, it was originally allocated for this year to be spent, or is this something that we just recently came up with because we thought it needed to be replaced, because it needed to be replaced? The old door was broken. It, the latch came undone while one of our employees was utilizing that piece of equipment, and it ruined the existing door that was on that piece of equipment. And we purchased, we ordered the new door, and it took, gosh, about two months before we received the replacement. It was on back order. It appears that they found this door someplace, because it's a new door, but it was quite dusty when it, when it reached us, so it appears that they had to do some searching to be able to find this door, but that piece of equipment, given the age of the piece of equipment.
So basically, we just move forward, we don't have to... Well, it's up to you. By consensus, are you saying that to let Ron proceed?
I'll make a motion that we purchase this door for $2,300, $731.
We already have the door.
The door is there.
Physically at DPW. So I'll second the motion to go ahead with the door and wait for a full replacement for the fiscal year.
All in favor?
Yes.
Strategic plan overview, Dave?
Let's see, there's nothing further at this point.
Right, thank you. New business?
Good evening. Liz Baker, Lowell Area Chamber Cameras. I need you tonight to ask permission for the fireworks that we have every year at our Riverwalk Festival, which is the 22nd Annual Riverwalk Festival. The fireworks are sponsored in full and paid for in full by the laws of Kent. And in order for us to have those, you have to sign off on a permit. So I'm asking for permission for that. And as long as I'm here, I'll just go on with the road closure as well. At Riverwalk, we have a car cruising every year, and it's become a real hit of the Riverwalk Festival. So we ask that we close the road, it would be Avery Street from Monroe to just pass Impact Church, and then we close it on Jefferson? Am I saying that right, Steve? Jefferson to the school superintendent's office, we close it to their driveway, so that we can line up the classic cars. And we do that on Saturday for that. So a couple things.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I say Impact? I'm sorry. And Mass Church.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for item A, that we approve their request for the fireworks on July 9th.
I'll second that.
Could I have a roll call vote on this, please?
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
And Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Okay, the Riverwalk Festival street closure request, could I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we allow them to close the streets as presented for the parade and car show.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Thank you on behalf of the Lowell Area Chamber Cameras and everybody that enjoys the Riverwalk Festival.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item, item C, the Big Boiler Brewery Resolution?
Mayor, I can tee that up if you'd like. Let me say that first, Brett Siegel, who's the developer of this project, is in the audience, and he'll come up in a couple minutes and explain his project, maybe give you a little bit of background information. This is a project, an interesting project, in that it is about $1.2 million that we'll take to develop this project. It'll be located down the street, across the street from here, I think most of you know that. And it will be financed, hopefully, through a combination of things. Obviously, money that the developer and his partners put into the project. They've also applied for what's called a CBGT grant to the MEDC, and that's the issue that we're, that's the grant and the agreement related to the grant that we're still trying to work out the legal issues on. And then there's also a requirement, you'll hear more about this as this project progresses, for a local effort from the local community to help support the project. And so it's likely that the DDA may get a request to use some of the tax increment revenues that are generated from that project to support eligible costs, primarily costs related to ADA compliance requirements, which is an eligible cost. They are also applying for, as I understand it, a facade grant to the Historical Preservation Commission. And then it's likely you also may hear or get a request in the future for a Act 198 tax abatement on the manufacturing portion of this project. So I'm just telling you that in advance, so you know that that may be coming forward. This project will take some time to develop. MEDC, I've been in contact with them, we're at least 90 days away before they take something to the committee formally for approval. The action tonight would be to approve the application for a liquor license for the restaurant portion of this project. With that, I guess Brett, if you're, did you go? You leave? We must have left. I can't tell you much. Oh, there it is, okay. So Brett, yeah, if you could just tell them, I gave a little bit of background information. If you could just tell them a little bit about your project?
Hi, my name is Brent Slayton. I own the Superior Building across the street. I've got to apologize, I wasn't planning on doing any kind of formal presentation tonight. I was just planning to come here and vote for the liquor license resolution, but if there's any general questions or anything that you have for me regarding that, I'd be happy to answer them. We'll have prints and site plans and all that stuff at a future meeting, but basically what we're looking to do is repurposing the eastern portion of the old Superior Furniture Building into a brew pub, bringing some of that West Michigan craft beer. Bringing some of that West Michigan craft beer to experience the downtown Lowell. Create some jobs, invest in some money, hopefully bring some citizens from surrounding communities into Lowell and spend some money there.
How many employees are you looking at, Brett?
Well, we applied for a grant through the MEDC, it's a job creation grant is the way it's structured right now. The, uh, number of jobs that we committed to is sixteen, full-time job equivalents, which I believe is thirty-five hours. We may have to shift that, having some conversations earlier with, uh, with, we may have to shift, there's so many different channels of grant money and how they're structured. I don't know if it's going to end up being a job creation grant, but at the end of the day, it may be some other type of grant. But either way, it's going to be sixteen to twenty jobs that will come in.
Do you remember that I did mention when you were out of the room, that you may come back to them also and ask for tax abatement on the manufacturing portion?
The way the grant's structured now, there has to be what they call a significant local contribution. What that dollar amount is, is you have to be determined, I've asked the state for a specific dollar amount and they give you a range. Um, that can come in the form of TIF, tax abatement, direct contribution through, I'm working with historic people, they'll possibly do a facade grant. It can come in any, many different shapes and forms. I don't know the final equation yet, it's all still being put together. The people from the city have been fantastic, you know, everybody's worked, you know, hard to get this thing put together. There's so many different pieces to this puzzle, but it's coming together, it's finally taken shape, I've been working on this thing for probably two years. And it's getting close to coming across the finish line. And like I said, we'll probably be here at a future meeting with some more specific plans. But right now, that's kind of where it's at. We're hoping tonight to get a vote for the liquor license resolution so we can continue moving that forward with the Liquor Control Commission because of the time that that's going to take, so that's why I'm here tonight asking for that. And like I said, in the future, there will be some kind of request for a tax abatement or TIF or something like that, if this is possible.
If I might, I believe the place usually where you could get this to pass over, and I imagine it passed?
All the partners involved have passed.
Excellent, that's good to know. Mr. Mayor, if I might, uh, I, uh, move that we approve the resolution zero dash sixteen to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
I'll second.
Here we go. Motion in a second, um, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Altoc?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The new Union Brewery Resolution, okay? We have representatives from the Union Brewery and?
Yeah.
Good evening, thank you for allowing us to, uh, join on to the schedule tonight. Um, we just had, uh, last, or last week, the approval of the site plan. And, uh, the state of Michigan, the last thing that's needed for the state of Michigan would be the council approval. Saying that the city is, uh, looking to allow the brewery to go in, um, to Lowell. And so that's the last item that we need to finish up our application to the state and federal government. So we're looking tonight to, uh, seek approval, it's just a one-page approval, um, just a year and a half for allowing that to move forward.
You might mention with the location and?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, it's, uh, four hundred West Main Street, um, right downtown.
It used to be the, uh, the Michael's Market Building, I guess it was.
Correct.
Right in front of the building.
Yep.
But you're not going to be using the Lowell and Fee building?
No, just the building in the front.
I think, I think most people would know where that is. You might mention some of the, you're going to be having a tasting room and then there's some area of the distribution, is that?
Correct, yeah, we're, um, doing contract brewing with some of the local restaurants, uh, in the West Michigan area. Um, we will have a tasting room available for people that want to sample or, um, look to fill up a growler, uh, that kind of thing. So, um, just want to be, uh, kind of taking it to the next level for us and, uh, you know, be part of the community. And, uh, also like Big Boiler Brewery, you know, bring, bring some of that craft brewery into the city of Lowell.
What if nobody knows about Big Boil, Big Boiler Brewery or anything like that? What are you offering? And I mean, you haven't done the local restaurants around town from what I know of and ask people.
What kind of questions?
I'm just asking that you, have you bonded local restaurants in town?
Yeah, we, uh, actually just talked to one of them tonight.
Okay, one, and there's how many in Lowell? Just my question, just asking?
We're not serving any type of, uh, food or anything like that.
I'm just asking what you're offering for your beers? Are you offering it in Lowell and can we have an option to buy it?
Yes, we're having a taste, yeah, we're having a tasting room that will be open, uh, certain hours during the week.
Not everybody knows what a small craft is and things like that, that's what I'm asking.
Sure, sure, it's like, um, you know, up north, the winery, um, in the Traverse City area, they have many wineries around. And, uh, you know, there's some tasting rooms around town here. Closest one I can think of would be on Bramble Bottom Brewery, they have a tasting room as well. And it's just where you can come and sample beers and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
And the motion would be then to, uh, approve the, uh, resolution to, uh, move on with their plans as presented to the planning commission last week.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution as presented.
Jim did, but that's okay.
That's okay, I can second it.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
I have a motion in a second, um, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Altoc?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Intern city manager contract agreement. The, the attached agreement outlines the terms of employment for Dave Pasquale, who is serving as intern city manager. The recommended motion is to approve this agreement between the city of Lowell and city manager Dave Pasquale. I'll make the motion that we approve this agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion?
I just see that the terms of the contract are pretty direct, pretty straightforward, quite simple, I'm sure it's, I think it'll be available on the website. So, it's public information, so we're not pulling a fast one here, it'll be out there. And, uh, it's, it's a good one, it's, uh, to be for short-term of, and, and so we can find, despite you may find a real city manager, right? Thank you, Dave.
Oh, thank you. So much. Um, roll call vote, please.
We have a motion.
Or we get to?
Yeah.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Altoc?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
And then, intern city, oh no, wastewater infiltration?
No, we have a manager resolution.
Oh, manager resolution. We've already done that.
This is to employ, it's different, I don't know. One should account for the other one, but it, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
But it's a resolution, if I may, just to employ Dave as the intern, intern city manager and, uh, Pasquale's acceptance of the position. Uh, and a resolution zero-two dash one-six, I'd make that motion.
And I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Altoc?
Yes.
Wastewater inflow infiltration presentation? We have Brian Billmont here from Cryon and Newhoff, uh, that will explain the projects involved. And obviously, our interpublical director around Woods will also chime in as necessary. But Brian, why don't you start off and, and also, can't forget Mark Mun, he's, he's a driving force on this too, so.
Do that vote back up in the back there, so, thank you, yeah, my name is Brian Bill, I'm with Cryon and Newhoff, we do engineering, work with the city. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you and talk about, uh, what, and to us, I think to you and all the citizens, is an important topic, although not, uh, often seen because so much of it's below ground, it's really the, the infrastructure systems that support the city. And as you heard, citizens are very concerned about the roadways and I think a lot of what we're talking about in this memorandum here addresses other things such as the wastewater system. And, and I'll get into a little bit of the SAW grant also, which is a grant to the state that also will help with the stormwater system. This memorandum that we've presented to council really shows the timeline of, of several things that have been progressing. City staff and we have been working diligently to try to evaluate a good portions of the, of the wastewater system. There's some major pieces of that system, as you know, when you think about the wastewater system, um, all the, the waste streams from the city and the sewage comes down to really one primary point, just south of King Milling, that's the main lift station. All the waste streamed from the city goes through that station and is pumped southward to the wastewater plant, uh, where it's then of course processed and then cleaned up. So those are two major pieces of the infrastructure system or the main lift station. And then that connected pipe, you know, goes to the wastewater plant. Other pieces of that main system include that the Valley Vista Lift Station, which takes a big chunk of the neighborhood over in the west, as well as there's the river crossing pipe, uh, which in essence conveys all the sewage from the east side of the city under the river by the station. I'll get into a little bit of that in a moment, but I wanted to run through the timeline here, things that have happened. Um, a quick, uh, and I'll try to be brief with this, a little history on what the SAW grant is. The SAW grant is a storm and wastewater grant that, uh, is put out by the state of Michigan. Um, it's a one-time program that they have. Um, a little history on that is back in two thousand two, the, uh, people of Michigan voted on some, a bond proposal to help fund clean water initiatives in the state of Michigan. That money was distributed through various programs in the state, uh, to try to help clean up water, whether it's through sanitary sewer overflow cleanup or various other programs. Um, back in, then in two thousand twelve, there was still some money left in that program. The state tasked the DEQ with coming out with a new program to help get those funds out into, um, into the hands of the communities. And so the DEQ came up with this SAW grant program. What it really is, is an asset management program. It's a, a grant that in Lowell's case is a ninety percent grant, so you guys pay an essence of ten cents on the dollar for this grant. And it helps you develop an asset management plan for your stormwater system and your wastewater system. And that includes collection and treatment. What that means is, what an asset management plan does, is helps you identify what you have, what condition it's in, develop strategies for rehab or replacement that maximize your return on investment. And then plan for future replacements and rehab and maintenance work on those systems. And then also helps you develop long-term financing programs for that. And when we talk about long-term financing programs, I'll use the bookends of extremes. One bookend would be where you cash finance everything. Meaning if I have to spend a thousand dollars a year from now, I have to save up every month a little bit to get there. So you're cash financing everything. The other bookend is that you, uh, borrow finance everything and that's through bonds. And as a municipality, you have those options. Um, what the reality is, is that, um, as a municipality, you end up finding a balance between those options. So typically, a certain amount of your improvements in rehab, you guys will cash finance. Other big issues, for instance, if you replace the wastewater plant or as we're going to look at, replace the main lift station, that may be an issue you bond for, and that, those are things that Dick Bump will get involved with as well. But that kind of frames what the SAW program is about. Um, those, the applications for the SAW grant went in in December, uh, December two of two thousand thirteen. Um, there was four hundred and fifty million dollars available in the entire program. And there were about, well, I think, uh, almost eight hundred applicants for that thing. Um, and now a lot of them, some have dropped out combined, so they're down to around six hundred and fifty or so. But what that means is the DEQ instilled the lottery. So as we talked about in the memo, I mentioned there that on the notes for the SAW grant, you were included in the SAW grant lottery. What that meant was that the state of Michigan took all the applicants that, that submitted on December two, put them into a drawer and started drawing them out one at a time. And what that meant is that not everybody was funded on the first year of the grant program. So there have been several rounds, you guys are slated for, but it's called the fourth round, which would be this October to get your grant. However, because the legislation for that grant was signed way back in, in, in two thousand thirteen, uh, you guys, the costs that you can get reimbursed for, um, are retroactively eligible. So as we talk forward here in the memo about things like an INI study and looking at capacity of the lift station, those costs, since they're investigating both condition and capacity, are eligible for SAW grant reimbursement. So when you guys get your SAW grant hopefully here then in October, there will be a large reimbursement request submitted and there'll be money coming back to the city for those things. Okay, so again, the SAW grant was applied for, you guys are slated for that award in, uh, this October. Um, before I move on, any questions about the SAW grant, before I move on with that?
No?
Okay, great, it's a great program and it's unprecedented in our ministry and it's a, a great thing for the city because it's one of the few times there's that much funding that's been put forward to allow cities to actually put eyes on pipe, what we're calling, and really do great condition assessments for the whole infrastructure. One of the things that'll come out of that is we're going to look at the timing of when pieces of infrastructure need to be replaced based on their condition. So, and that's every pipe in the, in the whole collection system. We're also going to coordinate that with road, looking at the road conditions too. So the idea is that we try to time those infrastructure replacements, water included, with when we're doing road work. So avoiding doing things like replacing a road one year and five years later having to replace the sanitary sewer, that's it. So we'll time those, so that SAW grant will help tie all that together. So that was taken care of, I'll move on in the timeline. Uh, then in April, we'll begin investigation of the lift station. You know, Mark Mun and his group have done a great job maintaining this infrastructure. Um, but you just can't maintain things forever, nothing lasts forever. Um, that station, as I noted in, in the timeline, was, was built originally back in sixty-three. Um, it's already been rehabbed, in eighty-three it was rehabbed. Um, and it's just reaching its useful life. So when we started investigating that lift station, um, the idea was deciding, do we rehab it in place? Or we took a step back and said, does it make sense to leave it where it's at? Part of the reason it's located where it's at is that prior to the wastewater plant going in, there really used to be two, in essence, large septic tanks, one on either side of the river. And when those kind of process the waste and then the water overflowed into the river, that's how things were handled. So the lift station is located there. Now, we're looking at this idea, and if you guys have looked at, had a chance to look at that report, from a long-term cost perspective, it makes sense to take that station and move it back to, right, adjacent to the wastewater plant. Um, it saves on pumping costs, it reduces risk because there's no force main that runs down through the fairgrounds there, um, which has a chance of breaking at some point, if that force main had ruptured, you'd be pumping four hundred gallons a minute out onto the fairgrounds and which would eventually foam the river. So there's risk associated with failed infrastructure. And, and as it turns out, we had the recommendation that we replace that station, um, at the wastewater plant and work with the gravity line to fix that. That also then brought out investigation of the old pipeline that crosses underneath the railroad tracks by King Milling. Also brought about that idea of the old river crossing pipe because when we did some flow monitoring, that was done later, as you mentioned, uh, it mentions in the timeline, later on in October, we started that, in February. Looking at flows that are coming into the system, we realized that the sum total of the flows from the flow monitors did not always equal the sum total of flow that we saw at the plant. So that means it was coming in somewhere else, and one of the likely suspects is the river crossing. So I think it's another one of those things, it's an old pipe, we want to be careful, we want to have a little redundancy. And I think another... think another river crossing pipe makes a lot of sense, uh, given its age and, and just for security of the system. So we have these major improvements all that, that happen and I think the idea is that we, as we mentioned, we can't let, things just won't last forever. Even the staff has done a tremendous job getting every value, um, getting all the, every dollar's value out of, of all the pieces of equipment. It just gets to be a time when you just have to fix them. And so, move on to present that information to council, that it's, we're not just jumping on the idea that we have to fix something now because something's breaking now. This has been a long-term review process of trying to find the, the best way to invest the city's money and what makes sense. And, and these four big pieces of the main lift station and its connector to the wastewater plant, the Valley Vista Station and the river crossing are the core primary pieces of the system and we do need to address those now. The rest of the collection system, those things, we'll also tackle with the SAW grant. Hopefully that wasn't too long, that's something. Thank you.
I, you just can't underestimate the, how important this is. Our wastewater system is, needs constant maintenance and upgrading and this is what, we're making some major investment, particularly that main lift station is going to be extremely important. We talk about utilities, talk about roads, things like that. I think, you know, the city is trying to keep on top of it. And so what we're looking at doing in our wastewater system is, is extremely important and we just want to make sure that you are aware of what's going on.
And Brian, if I may, uh, Mark Munt was kind enough to, I think, give all the council members a tour of the wastewater facility and indicated, at least he did with me and I trust, I asked him to, to give me the same, uh, tour, but, uh, it would indicate where that lift station would be located, uh, near the wastewater treatment plant. Indeed, uh, he's been around a long time and, uh, it's, it's time to step up and make, make things right. Band-aids have been put on this part too long and it's, it's time to fix it and be, be right with it, so.
So, so as you can see, the, you know, I've talked a little about the history, the next, the future actions that are required is that we'll, we'll need council approval to move forward with that design of those items. Um, you know, they're not short lead time items, the design can move along very quickly. I've got a, a rough schedule here. The schedule that we show here is a conservative one, meaning that I think we can probably push things along faster to get things moving. Uh, a good example of why we want to get moving quickly is with the lift, primary lift station, the main lift station there, those pumps take a long lead time. They can take fourteen to eighteen weeks to get, um, so that, and that's from when the contractor orders them. So we have to get a design done, get the DEQ to approve the design, and of course, city staff has to review that. Then we have to go out for bids and get a contractor on board, then they can order the equipment and then we sit and wait for those pumps. Now, that doesn't mean we sit on our hands the whole time because there's things like all the, uh, the structure of the station itself, the electrical, the, the piping, the feed that has to go from the current lift station, uh, to the wastewater plant can all go in, then also of course Valley Vista and the river crossing, all that needs planning. The crossing into the railroad I mentioned in the, in the notes there, uh, the railroad permits take notoriously long to manage. So really, we don't have any time to waste to get this process moving. And again, the, the financing of the actual construction stuff, I think there's some discussions that will happen with, with Dave and, and Ron and, and Mark and, and Dick on that and some recommendations for that will come to you, but I think we do need council approval, um, as soon as possible to move forward on, on the design aspects of it and to make sure that you guys are all on board with moving forward with that.
Will you get some input from you on it?
Brian did a very good job of, of presenting the findings and the information. My, my counsel to Brian was, try and, and bring you folks up to speed. This isn't something that has, has just come about in, in the, in the last year. This has been several years in the making. A lot of planning has gone into this, a lot of staff time has gone into this, my staff and I, and we've had numerous meetings over the last year with, with Brian and with, um, Mark Munt, his staff, our staff, and we've looked at this and we, we are all in agreement with the recommendations that have, that have come forth from Cryon and Newhoff on this, on this effort. We need to move forward rather quickly to, to get going on this. With, with regard to the SAW grant, um, I and my staff have been keeping track of our time and some of the efforts that we have put forth on, on doing evaluations on the system also, so we will, we will be including that in, in the reimbursement request that will be coming before you, um, in the fall.
Is there a recommendation at this time from staff or you'll be crashing tonight or this is a report?
I, I would like to have a recommendation from, from the, uh, I would recommend that, that the council approve Cryon and Newhoff to go forward with detailed design on the lift station if you, you so choose.
Sounds like my motion, I may make that, so, uh, to go with, uh, Newhoff and, uh, moving forward.
I'll second.
I moved in second, discussion?
Is there, Mark, do you have anything as far as your...
Uh, I think Brian did a very good job covering everything. Uh, this is a work in progress and it's been going on for a couple of years. Uh, I started the process, I guess, when I found out about the SAW grant. It's, uh, it is now required in our new NPS permit that we have a detailed asset management plan and that's why we went after the SAW grant, uh, because that, it's, it's a very comprehensive thing that we need to do and this is a good way to get ninety cents on the dollar. Uh, I, I also started and did the initiative to get the lift station going. Uh, my first thought was to rehab the existing lift station, but then we got an engineer about and, and sometimes that's a good thing and sometimes in this, in this case it was a good thing, uh, because they have a tendency to take a broader look at things and that's when he started bringing up things like the river crossing and the pipe that goes from the lift station to the plant is just as old as the lift station. So the lift station needs to be rehabbed, what kind of condition is the pipe in and for a lot of good reasons, it made perfectly good sense at the end of the day to move forward with the plan that Brian has presented to me. So we would appreciate your supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have a question I'd like to ask, uh, if you might. Jim Salswood, five oh five, North Jefferson. Um, has any budget numbers been put out and what would the SAW grants cover? And then to the residents, what would the rate increase be for stepping up and paying us? Definitely if we don't have the money, it's going to be coming from somewhere. So probably before sometime in the near future, I'd like to know where that is coming from and what that potentially looks like, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Can maybe have that in the next...
What? Probably be looking at then providing a proposal in terms of how this will be put together monetarily?
Yes, we could do that.
And then obviously involving our city attorney and, and who's also our bond counselor.
Correct.
It's a good point. And we have, we have talked about this in a preliminary stage when we've been together in the staff. I think the one good thing that has, has happened is, is that our wastewater treatment plant has been paid in full. Um, we don't have, you know, some long-term debt right now, so it's a, it's a good situation for us to go ahead and look at the, you know, the possibilities of bonding, but to talk about it then in one comprehensive, um, document would be something that we want to do.
And if I may make one more statement too, just as a clarification and more for the audience members, is that the SAW grant through, through the state of Michigan does not pay for any physical improvements on the system, they won't do that. What the system, the SAW grant was really set up to do was to help communities identify really what they have out there because amazingly enough, a, a lot of communities don't even have mapping of their piping, so they're just going on a reactionary basis of fixing things. So what they have, where it's at, and then what condition it's in, so that you can then assess at what point there's a potential for failure on that system and then financially be able to plan in the long term. Because too many communities right now are, in essence, living, uh, day to day and then doing reactionary work and not planning long-term on infrastructure. And that's really what the SAW grant helps do on, for the entire system. So just as a clarification, that it, it's not for construction dollars, but it is all those, the planning effort, a very, very comprehensive planning effort, um, that the list literally going to put eyes on every single pipe in the city, so that's a great thing.
And that's what Jeff's been doing with his mapping and, and for...
Yes.
Thank you.
And there's a motion?
Yeah, second. Rule call vote?
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
Mayor Althaus.
Yes.
Councilmember DeVor.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Assessors agreement?
Jeff and DeVor should have been our assessors since, uh, 2010, that's six years. During that time, they have not had an increase during that six-year tenure, tenure. We're looking at providing a compensation of forty-five thousand dollars for, for this work. There is no fringe benefits allowed or provided in this. And then in addition, we're looking at, um, a two-year contract that would provide no additional monies, uh, beyond what is being paid. So basically, that's what we're looking at, um, is to continue with, with the rations for assessor.
Just, Dave, just to be clear, I, looking at the agreement, this would be effective as of March one?
Right.
Do I have a motion?
I'll motionally approve the agreement.
I'll second.
Discussion? Rule call vote?
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
Mayor Althaus.
Yes.
Councilmember DeVor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Monthly reports?
Uh, this is the agreement, resolution to...
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Just, um... Yes, the assessor, um, agreement? Dave?
The resolution.
It's just a, it's a resolution approving the...
Okay, so, a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Rule call vote?
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
Mayor Althaus.
Yes.
Councilmember DeVor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
And Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Monthly reports, Dave?
Any questions for the reports of the, the city? Do you scroll the agenda up a little so we can...
Board of Commissioner reports? Mr. Hedges?
Sure. Uh, Arbor Board met last week and, uh, discussed various trees in the community. There was a discussion about a circuitry on Lafayette Street and, uh, Mr. Woods was unable to attend the meeting, but, uh, we won't be discussing that, it was table, uh, not defeated, it was table, so we'll be discussing that as we meet again in March. What committee, uh, will be meeting, uh, in May? Uh, proposals to the local committee are due April twenty-ninth, as I understand it, and, uh, LCTV endowed board, uh, will begin its meetings, I believe, around March third, so, uh, and things, things are moving on, so. Those are the reports from the various boards and I serve on.
Jaylen?
The Planning Commission talked about, uh, the Union Brewery, which, uh, we think is a pretty good, uh, program for us. We also talked about overlay for the floodplain and, uh, that has been adjusted by, by, uh, what is the name of that company?
Williams Works?
Williamson Works, yes. And, uh, so that helps facilitate, uh, talking about the gravel pit where, uh, gravel, it wants to do a little bit of mining of sand and gravel. And, uh, we need two new members on the board. And that's it.
Mr. Phillips?
Um, I haven't been to the historical meeting, uh, the next one's the twenty-third of this month.
And Mike?
Yeah, I sat in on Parks and Rec today, um, working on figuring out where, what direction we're going to take with possibly naming the boy scout cabin on the North Washington property, uh, working on its new pamphlets and booklets, uh, should be available next meeting, right, very rough draft. Um, and then a couple of grants for the parking lots at Stony and Creepside Park. Um, I left to come to this meeting before the park updates, uh, so I'll have something on that, our next meeting, March fifteenth, right here.
I had airport board meeting last week, um, we are in the process of, of hiring a new fit space operator.
And a good one.
And we'll have a, we'll have a little bit more on that in, in April. But things are going pretty good out there. There's a lot of new, little businesses coming to town and, and, um, he's going to bring a lot of, um, more airplanes into the airport and, uh, so I think there's, um, there's a lot of growth rate to happen out there. We are going to work on trying to get our general utility out there, which is, which qualifies as to go after money from the, from the, from the airports that they have. Right now, we, everything is done in-house, they have to raise their own money to operate, so, um, I had my first vision meeting today, um, which is pretty nice and interesting. Um, there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of good ideas out there, but it, they all take, take time, that's why they call it a vision. And, uh, Jim's sat on that board for many years and, and, uh, but there's not much update because they're all just visions. And, uh, the fireboard, um, meets next week. That's all I have for the night. City managers report.
What about appointments?
We do have two appointments, um, to make on the Planning Commission and we are, hopefully we'll get some applications. I'm going to talk to Jim.
Now, Mr. Mayor, if I might too, uh, Mr. Beecham reminded us that, uh, there is a city council representative that usually sits on the LA Board and, uh, I think maybe it would be good if, uh, in the future or even tonight, uh, we might, uh, fill that position.
We actually did, it is Mike.
It is Mike.
Yeah, and he had a, he had a, he had to go to work that night and I had an airport meeting and it was, I didn't realize that he wasn't, so.
All right.
But we'll, we'll make sure that someone's there.
Just want to make sure that it's, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Internal city manager.
Did you have any other appointments or are we all set?
I think we're all set.
Are we all set with appointments?
Yeah.
Uh, just briefly, um, the question was, was raised concerning the cities, uh, participating in the rental rehabilitation program, uh, and because the, the city at this time has opted out of the urban, um, county CBPG program, uh, we can qualify under this program. Uh, also, uh, there's been some discussion about sidewalks and in discussion with the mayor, we had talked about seeing if we could get, um, some, uh, help through the LCTV fund, uh, and looking at, uh, an application where we would be paying sixty percent of the cost, uh, for repair of sidewalks in the property over at forty percent. An application has been submitted in, um, I don't know if it's going to be approved or not, but we did want to at least raise that issue where it would just help us in terms of, well, we wanted to concentrate first on the ones that are in the worst shape. And, uh, so that's what we, we have submitted to, uh, to the LCTV fund. And, um, we have, I've been conducting an internal view of our cemetery rules and once completed, uh, there'll be recommendations of changes. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Callen?
Yeah, there was nothing tonight.
Alan?
Thank you for a good turnout, and I appreciate the comments, and I do, whether it's good or bad, I do take it to heart, and if anybody would want to call me anytime, my number's all over that website that gets criticized. I would love to talk to anybody over coffee or coke or something. I'm open, so please, don't hesitate to call me.
Mike?
Nothing tonight.
Jeff?
I'm all set.
I do got to make a comment on the one thing that Dave brought up is the sidewalks. The council in years back did the sidewalk replacement, not all of it got done. We never really finished our policy, and so we're going to work really hard with Dave and the staff to get a new policy, so that it's enforced the way it's supposed to be enforced, otherwise we'll be right back where we were.
The one thing that we did do through the Public Works Department is identify the sidewalks that are in most need of repair. And so that's going to be provided, and obviously the property owners are going to be.
Thank you. And that's all I have for the night, thank you.
I see that you're going to close session next. Are you having our city attorney, Dick Went, sit in on that closed session? Okay.
As Jim said earlier, this isn't required to be a closed session meeting, you are allowed to conduct this in open session, and after what's going on with Ms. Henry, I don't think she needs to be here.
Thank you. I make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15-26HH.
Mr. Mayor, that section of the Open Meetings Act is a section allows you to have an exemption if there's a specific state or federal statute that allows for that exemption, so you need to state the purpose of the exemption. Normally, and I understand this evening, that the purpose of the exemption is to discuss a written opinion of legal counsel with legal counsel, and if that is in fact the case, that should be a part of your motion.
Thank you. With that, riot the motion? Riot, I make the motion to go into closed session. I can repeat all that, Dick, too.
That's why I.
Do I have a second? Okay. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, while this is an important topic that we discuss is in open session.
Just to address what it is that you just asked there, and probably why there wasn't a second, the request was actually made by Mark Hall through his attorney, that according to the settlement negotiations with regard to a separation agreement, it was his request that this be done in closed session pursuant to the statutes stated up there and explained a little bit more by Mr. Went. So it was out of respect for his attorney, or his request that was made through his attorney, that I brought forth the request here tonight and asked you guys to make that motion, to be able to go into closed session and talk about the matters as brought forth. I'm not sure how you'd want to handle it if you want to try to handle it in an open session, because that was a request made by him, that's not my request, that was his request, and I was trying to honor that by bringing that forth to you. In case you have any questions, I'll just stand here for a second, and if you don't, I'll sit back down.
I'll just defer here to Mr. Went. I have had a conversation with Mr. Howell recently, and it was my impression, and I could be wrong, but it was my impression that it was okay to discuss this in a public meeting.
Well, you know, I don't know either where his position, I haven't talked to him or his lawyer, all I can tell you is that that's not his decision to make, it's, at this point, it's your decision as to whether or not you want to go into closed session or not. So it's really up to you to make that determination. And there would be nothing wrong with discussing it in public session.
If I can defend why I didn't second, I didn't get the closed session request from Mark's attorney until today. I had literally four hours probably to review it, so I'm not educated enough on what he even wants, but we tried the closed session route, and I think now everybody's entitled to know exactly what he wants and exactly what we all want.
That's your, sure, that's your choice.
We went into a closed session because we wanted to honor the privacy, the ability to have Mark be able to get another job, and we made him an offer that was exactly what he wanted and what his original contract with the city was about, and we asked him to come in on the following Monday at noon, and with the signed documents, and he did come in at noon, but there were different documents that he had brought in. And I would still like to offer to him to, you know, accept what he originally proposed, and we're all good, we want healing in this community, and I want Mark to move on and the city to move on, and we were hoping that he would take his very own agreement and move on. And it's, we were under, part of it was part of a gag order, we couldn't respond to what you guys were asking, because we didn't want that out in public. So I would apologize if I could, but we wanted to honor the fact that Mark wanted it private at that point, and I guess there's nothing more than I can say about it, but at least now you know that scenario, and I just don't understand why Mark didn't accept what he asked for. Well, I can, if I may, the original separation agreement, which was written into his contract when he was hired, was based on a separation and not a firing, not a public humiliation, not the way that it was done. In Mark's counteroffer, he's willing to not sue the city. He has legal counsel that has directed him that he could sue the city for defamation of character, loss of pension, and loss of future earning abilities based upon the way he was dismissed. And I think that those things that Mark has offered in his counter is for a payout upfront, an entire amount, once, and he would not sue the city. So we have a choice of, a couple of choices, but it all really centers around Mark's ability or choice, not to say that he would win, not to say that we would lose, but that the issue is that he does have the ability, should he see that he has some sort of forfeiture and loss and defamation of character, as well as loss of income, to sue the city for those, or a recovery of those losses. His counteroffer, which he made, as I say, offers a one-time cash payout, and he'll walk away and not sue the city. So there's a difference between what was offered in his original hire-in contract and the way things transpired and Mark's legal abilities to move forward in one way or another. So what's your plan? What would you guys like to do? I understand there's another scenario. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah.
Insurance?
What?
Insurance? We made him the offer that he gave to our attorney, his attorney gave to our attorney. We said yes, gag order everything, we're not going to talk about it, you can take your settlement, and then on the next Monday, he came in and turned it down. He came in with a different contract, and I don't know what his intent was, but it was different from what he originally proposed. And I had hoped that he would just accept what he offered. I understand that there's an insurance policy for the city, where if he wanted to sue the city, then he can sue the city and we pay a deductible, and the insurance companies take the responsibility from there. It would be a very nice ride for Mr. Howell. I would encourage him, and I don't know where this meeting is going tonight, I would encourage him to take that settlement that he originally proposed. I don't really want to have a different settlement. And I don't know if the council wants to, and I will, to make a motion that by next Monday at noon, he come in with the signed documents that he asked for originally, and will honor everything, and otherwise, he can take us to court, the insurance takes over at that point, and it's a tough fight. If I may, he has provided us with a signed separation agreement, and it's on the table for us. I haven't seen it. It was emailed just this afternoon, but it was sent to us about 3:30?
I think so, it's going on then, this afternoon.
Right here.
Did Perry want to say something?
I know that you're not discussing the marks and everything. I too have talked to Mr. Howell, and my, again, I'm not privy to everything that you are and anything else. My understanding is, from what he was entitled to, a six-month severance, being paid every two weeks, and continue on just as he was, as if he was employed, and my understanding, he was just asking for a one-time payment, the six months of one total amount, and not doing it every two weeks. Now, it could be different than that, that's just the conversation that I had with Mark. And he said I could share that, so just as the public understands, it's basically the same amount I think the council was looking at, and I think that there's a clause in there that if he should get employment someplace else, that whether they wouldn't have to pay anything more, or pay the difference, or whatever the case may be, and my understanding is what Mr. Howell came back with was just the six months in one lump sum, and had that be done. So I just, I don't, this is what a phone conversation with Mr. Howell was that I had with him.
Did he relate to you that the original offer was his offer, not our offer? He presented us an offer in order to move forward and to let the city heal, we approved that offer with no concessions, and then he came back with a second offer?
No, he did not. He did not say that that was his offer to begin with. He just, his conversation, the last conversation I had with him, he was looking for the six months in one total lump sum as compared to going every two weeks.
Well, both offers were against him, and he didn't negotiate or try to short him anything he was entitled to in an effort to move forward. So he's continuing to hold up the progress here. But we're making everything public, so I made.
I just wanted to get those amounts out that we're talking about. I believe he's not talking about a different amount, I think he's talking about how he would be paid as a lump sum as compared to every two weeks. Thank you.
You said something, I just wanted to clarify.
Jim Salzweil, 505, North Jefferson. I don't know what the two contracts state, I don't know if it's just splitting hairs, but you guys talk about healing, and I think tonight would be a good time to put this behind us one way or the other, instead of continuing to drag it out, and let's start it tonight. So I'm in favor of you guys saying what you need to say, get it out and open, and let's close it tonight.
I just want to make sure, you know, you're all on the same page as to what you mentioned, Alan. The information that I received, those were basically questions that we had talked about or that had been posed, and the information that I received from city staff was that there is an insurance policy that does cover claims like that, there's actually no deductible with the information that I was given, but it was not clear, unless you had information that I didn't receive, you're still waiting to hear back from them as to if a lawsuit had to be filed, or what was the, what were the implications of if it was an agreement worked out prior to an actual lawsuit being commenced? So I just, in case you were, Alan, making that assumption based on something I said, I wanted to be clear that that was a question being posed, you know, to your insurance carrier, and I hadn't heard back in answer through the channels at City Hall, and that as far as the, Jim, you're correct, the contract, there is a signed contract that you guys have copies of, I believe was the original mailed to you then? Okay, so Sue does have the original, only difference being that his, and his attorney drafted the language, but his attorney had asked me to make a change after he had had Mark sign it. He had a typo in there or something, I made the change and told him I would present to you tonight the, it's just page two, so his signature's still valid on page three. It was, I think the word was rules, that it should have been rules or something like that, it's not a big deal, but his attorney asked that I change that, so if you guys did vote to approve of that contract tonight, you know, we would put in the appropriate page two for his request, and I guess, I was trying to remember what all the questions were, to see if there's anything, any information that he needed to clarify or provide, I think that was it.
I think we still need to talk a little bit, but I'm inclined, I really appreciate Jim Salzweil's comments, and Perry's too, and Mr. Hedges. I would like to have this all done, and I don't know if we need any further discussion, but I'd like to make a motion that we accept the contract for the full payout.
That's presented tonight?
That's presented tonight, I would like to just have this done, I would like to have Mr. Howell be able to move on, and the city be able to move on.
I'll second that motion.
This document here.
Correct.
A motion and a second? Discussion? Do you have anything, Jeff?
I'm with, I just want to heal, it's time to move forward and move in one direction as one community, and it's time to heal.
Rule call vote.
Mayor, just one point of clarification, I just looked at this, and there was a provision in there regarding keeping it confidential, and obviously you can't do that anymore, so that has to be recognized, that you're not giving the confidential.
I don't, I hope that we didn't disparage him at all, I would just assume we move on and honor, you know, where we're at now, and let Mr. Howell move on, let the city move on.
Dick, am I correct, in that agreement, it was confidentiality on both sides, ours and his? and his?
Yes.
So in discussing what he, in discussing what he offered to us with Perry, I believe that confidentiality was violated on our part and his.
I don't, I don't, you know, I wouldn't offer an opinion on that. I think it's, it's fine the way it is. I just point out that that was an issue that you can't abide by, so that needs to be communicated.
Okay.
I'm sure it will be.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, there's two pieces that maybe you guys might be mixing up there or confusing together. But one provision was talking about basically an official statement he was requesting being made on behalf of city council, and that that's what you guys would say, and that's what he's going to go with. And so when it, when it comes up to, you know, should citizens keep asking the reasons why he was let go, or should he want to say anything about that? His attorney's wording in suggesting this was, there's a provision in here that he stated what he would like you guys to say about it. So that you could still do, in a sense, I guess that keeps some pieces confidential just to allow that healing to take place, so you're not disparaging each other. But what I think maybe you were more alluding to was the paragraph 15, where the terms of this agreement would be treated as personal and confidential and shall not be released to anyone. That's kind of happened tonight, which is what you're talking about. So that's the provision that Mr. Wentz was just talking about. So just to be clear, that the other provision could still stand. And so I don't, you didn't take it, well, you just, what do you do, a motion in second? Perhaps you need some motion? Well, yeah, the motion in first and second, I didn't catch who all that was, but if you wanted to amend the accepting of that to strike paragraph 15, to clarify that, that's maybe how you should handle that, so.
And if I may, the, what the statement, listen to this one down here you go. The parties have reached an amicable agreement to end their relationship without recrimination. That's our official stand.
Right.
Well, I could make a motion, I believe, Mr. Jim.
Correct.
Delete that 15. I think that would get us past that over.
Take a motion, I'll make a motion to delete number 15 of the agreement.
I'll second.
You could just add that to your motion.
As an addition, then, okay. Thank you.
Little call vote?
Mayor Alcoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeWor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
And if I may, he also included on a page of expense reimbursement. I think we should honor that.
That was already being handled by Sue, I believe.
Yeah, if I understand that, it's $654.87.
Oh, prior to final date of employment?
Cumming and going's a mileage to Grand Avenue.
But before?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, we already.
I think it's already, yeah. I mean, a poll.
Just to be clear.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would, will we adjourn?
Second.
Moving second, do adjourn at 8:34? All in favor?
Yes.